Appearance on Dion's Daily Dose does not imply endorsement from or by any candidate or guest. The views, thoughts, and opinions expressed by Dion Bergeron for Dion's Daily Dose are his own and do not represent the views, thoughts, and opinions of any guests. Material and information presented is for general information purposes only. The Dion's Daily Dose name in all forms and abbreviations are the property of its owners and its use does not imply endorsement of or opposition to any specific organization, product, or service. If you'd like to support the show, please visit our Patreon at patreon.com/dionsdailydose.
All right. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to another episode of Dion's Daily Dose. And today I'm going to adjust my camera since I was doing something with it earlier. And it is less than perfect. There we go. All right. So today we have a very special guest. It is Timothy Stabos, the current La Porte County Auditor. And he is running for Commissioner for a seat currently held by Rich Rosensky, who, if you've been paying attention to the channel, you know that he is not going to appear on the Republican ballot for the primary election, which is, I'm not sure it's happened before, but nonetheless, there's going to be a Republican primary and there will be several individuals on it. This will be one of them. And without further ado, we're going to welcome Timothy Stabos to the show. There he is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, looking forward to this. Call me Tim for the rest of the show, I insist.
Okay.
And uh, yeah, looking forward to this.
Good, good. So what are the things that? I'm trying to make sure I can see you. I have, just so you know, I have a slightly different camera setup than I've been using. Um, and it's like right in my field of vision, which unfortunately kind of you see me doing this a lot so that I can make eye contact. I'm still working on it, guys, okay? Limited, limited. It's, um, so a lot of people, I'm sure in La Porte County have heard your name because newspapers and local reporters tend to get, anytime there's anything interesting in county council meetings or other meeting, commissioner meetings, um, they, they report on it as if it's earth shattering, right? I, I wouldn't go that far, but I would say as far as name recognition goes, and this is a comment that I received actually on, um, one of the, one of the little advertisements, the shares that I did for the show to get ready. Is he certain? The, the comment was, he certainly has name recognition. So the, the good, the good thing is that's nine tenths of the battle when it comes to running for political office is do they know your name?
Yeah.
So. Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you. Apparently, let me, let me double check something. That's what I did. Sorry about that. Let me fix this real quick. Excuse me. There. I was told that there was significant audio echo that should have taken care of it. There we go. I forgot to press a button. I, I forgot a button when we started, so I apologize for that. Luckily, my, uh, my wonderful lovely wife Liz ran in here and held up a note and told me that I had, excuse me, that I had the echo. So it's fixed now, I hope. If it's not, drop something in the comments and I'll see what I can do. There we go. Take care of it. I can't read what that says. You're killing me here. Okay. So apparently, hold on. I'm told that there's a repeat. I, I don't, I don't hear anything, so I'm, I'm not sure what she's, what she's talking about. Um, interesting. We're, we're going to move on and maybe we can fix it in post-processing. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what she means about it's repeating.
Well, she'll come back.
Yeah, I'm sure she'll come back with another note to let me know how I'm failing. No, I'm just kidding. She does a great job of keeping stuff on track and, and making sure that everything's going well, um, which I, I greatly appreciate, but I'd like to start off by, I hope that everyone, see, good now. That's what I said. See, now that I took care of it. She was talking about, uh, it, it, it has to do with the audio and I forgot to hit mute on this one. It's, it's fixed now. That's the short version. All right. So I'd like to start off, hopefully everyone took the time to read your bio. But I, I doubt they did. So I, rather than go through-
I'm going to step in and defend your audience right now.
Oh, okay. All right. Good. No, I'm sure, I'm sure that, that they did. Um, I made sure to include it in the post and a lot of people, um, they, they do read the whole thing.
I can be a snooze though, right?
No, no. I, I personally find you very interesting. Um, I, I've known Tim on a, on a like social level for a few years now. When I first ran for office, I met him, um, when I would go to the Republican stuff. Um, I've known him and the other individuals running for several years now, so.
And we got to know each other a little bit better personally, uh, as, as more than just acquaintances. Friendly, um, the last year or so.
Right, right. I would agree.
Understand each other, kind of know a little bit more about each other, so.
And that's kind of what I can, what I want to convey to the people watching is I know you on a, on a social level. I know you beyond the headlines and the little blurbs and stuff like that. One of the things, so I'm going to, I'm going to dive into some, some history here a little bit. Um, one of the things that I was told when I first got to know you was that you used to, um, you used to, uh, restore old pinball machines. And I, I think that's really cool because, uh, I always loved pinball machines when I was a kid and playing them. And I was terrible at it. I was always very, very bad at it. Um, wife and I actually went to, uh, this little Valentine's Day event where they, I forgot the name of the place, but I think it was Full Tilt in La Porte.
Okay.
And they do this little, uh, they have like couples pinball where you play together and then you gotta compare your high scores. And so we, we did okay. I think we came in like-
Yeah.
But yeah, we were, I, I was never really that good at it. She carried us for the most part.
I, I grew up with pinball machines. I, I'm 56 years old. I just turned 56 a couple day, a few days ago.
Oh.
And thank you. Um, and, um, you know, video games were not quite coming in yet, in yet. It was still pinball machines. And, you know, in those days, before the electronic games came in, it was the tail end of the electromechanical era where the machines had chimes, three different sounding bells and to a child. And then the artwork, I've always been kind of into beautiful things, artistry. I kind of like, uh, you know, maybe older cars, not muscle cars, but, um, and so, um, the artistry, the pop art, you know, of the, the designers of the, some just interesting artwork of the times they were. Uh, and it kind of evoked or suggested this, the whole time periods, the, um, uh, they tried in, in ways to appeal, I think, to, to young adolescent boys.
Oh, yeah.
With some of their rather risque or sensual or sexualized graphics.
Yeah, some of the graphics and art were very, I mean, they were, they were very, um, drawn.
Suggestive.
Yeah, that's the best way.
But, um, so, you know, it was just part of that era and, uh, I'm, I'm old enough that, so, uh, I think, I don't know, 20 or so years ago, I, I think I went to the show in Chicago Pinball Expo and they had an auction or something and I ended up buying a, a machine that was, you know, not alleged to work or anything, but it was an old electric electromechanical machine where you had scoring reels, like the, the dial, an odometer on a, on a car.
Okay.
The way they used to have mechanical odometers, you know, and I bought this thing for 160 bucks and, and I, you know, I didn't know what to, what to, uh, but I, you know, there was a reseller in Kalamazoo who was kind of willing to almost mentor me. And I, I'm not mechanical by background, but I, but I, I became pretty good at, uh, restoring and figuring out diagnosing the, the innards of the machine. Very fascinating because it's, they'll never be made that this way again. It's cloth wiring and, and it's just, you know, kind of interesting how they, um, mechanically have certain things happen, how they simulate random num- randomness and so, uh, and then touching up the play fields and touching up the back glasses, the glass that illuminates, uh, reds tend to peel.
Oh.
And so, you know, kind of, uh, touching up color. So it was, it was kind of an interesting thing that I did for a while. And, uh, I kind of wonder where I got the two hernias, you know, my, had a belly button hernia I had fixed a couple of years ago. And, you know, I got a hiatal hernia that I wonder if it was from heavy lifting, but I haven't done any restoration work in several years. And it's kind of, I kind of, uh, gotten out of that probably, you know, the busyness of politics or whatever else. Uh, but I love pinball machines. I think they're, I think they're great. I think they're great. You know, there's, those older pinball machines have an innocence to them, so.
They do. It's all electronic.
And, and then I was into the electronic era too, you know, the early electronic era and even more modern, well, not super modern pinballs, but, so I don't know, we could talk pinballs for now. We better not.
Right, right. Yeah, moving on. But I, I do find it interesting.
But I'm a regular guy, right? That's what that shows.
It, it does. Um, the, the, the pinball era, um, they, they still make them and, but they're very different now. It's all like, like our video game systems. It's, it's all electronics, you know, just bits and, you know, ones and zeros. Um, you're talking about the, the mechanical ones that had the, like you said, reels, like odometer style. And there were clicks and clacks and the bells and all of that.
Relays.
Yeah, which is, it's interesting to me.
Pre-solid state.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And so you mentioned art, um, and your appreciation of it. Is there like, what was your favorite, what was your favorite pinball machine to play as a kid? Do you have one specifically or was it just kind of like whatever?
Oh, it's, yeah, I can't remember. I mean, when I first came to La Porte there during that era, you know, that the whole Pinbot series was, was pretty cool. And they had like three or four different versions of Pinbot. That would be into the early nineties, you know, so. But, uh, I guess you have people, there's so many people don't know, maybe don't know about me when they see me being a finance guy into, into numbers and, and, and can be pretty cerebral in, in my, in my head.
Yeah.
A lot that I'm actually into, you know, artistic and beautiful, you know, things. I live in an old house because it's, and it's painted in five different colors and it's, it's beautiful. And I, I, I've researched the history of the, the family that built it and I'm connected. I've gone to the cemetery where they're, they're buried or he's buried and, and I'm, I'm a musician. I, 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 I took piano lessons for 13 years as a child. Like I got a, an old, an old piano in my house that I had restored that I play. I played trumpet in high school. I was in the marching band. So, you know, there, there is some, some, uh, some, uh, you know, artistic other background. I, like, I got an old, uh, 1973 Mercedes that I, that I love. It's a dark green olive car that I like to take out.
Beautiful, beautiful car.
Have you seen that car?
Yeah.
It's not that it's particularly, it's not that it's high value or anything. It's just a, it's just a beautiful, um, dignified.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a diplomat, you know, car or something.
That's the ones, um, it's actually that style. Speaking of diplomat, that's the style of car that I remember from like the, the eighties and nineties movies that they'd have stretched and it was exactly that body style.
Yes. I think certain Latin American dictators had the longer version of like banana republic. Uh, it was, it was one version was in one of the James Bond movies that was on the Roger Moore era, so.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah. And it's, it is. It's a beautiful car and it evokes, like you said, a very dignified aura around it, in, in my opinion, just looking at it. And of course it's.
For what, for people are wondering what we're talking about, I'm talking about a 1973, the last year of the style, 280 Mercedes 280 SEL.
There we go. Yeah.
280 SEL.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a beautiful car. Um.
Government, politics.
Yeah.
Uh, you should, you should be leading the show, but I-
No, by all means, yeah. It's, it's a good segue because-
Government, politics.
Diplomats.
Well, that is a good segue. Yeah. Thank you. So, you know, I was always interested in presidential politics as a kid.
Okay.
Say that, you know, uh, my, my first political, uh, um, interest was Jimmy Carter. Um, I'm a Republican, but, uh, you know, what, what seven-year-old or eight-year-old wouldn't like Jimmy Carter? To me, he was like Fred Rogers, um, with the smile on his face.
He was very personable.
Very personable. So, you know.
He was a very personable.
You know, I got into politics, much sure, you know, how or why, but always found it interesting. Always watched the news as a kid and, uh, I saw Jimmy Carter actually when he was campaigning in, in the Chicago Evergreen Plaza Mall outside Chicago back in 19, probably 75. So center mall, center court. So, so I've always been interested in that, uh, moved to La Porte, you know, in the early nineties and eventually ran for city council, served on the La Porte City Council for a couple of terms under, uh, Morris, uh, when Morris was mayor that one term and then, uh, under Blair Milo, her second term. So, uh, and, uh, you know, ran, ran for mayor in the Republican primary. Uh, Tom Dermody, uh, ran there and shellacked me, uh, as kind of expected. Um, but I wanted to get my ideas out there and, uh, and, uh, lobby for what I believed in and, and get, get, have a bully, not a bully pulpit, but a place to advertise what I believed in, so.
Absolutely. And that's, that's one thing that I've always appreciated about you is your willingness to step up and speak your mind.
I appreciate that. That is true, uh, about me. And I, I've been really disappointed. So I, so then after that, I decided to run for La Porte County Auditor.
Right.
In, uh, in, uh, 2020 and, uh, the, the party needed someone. I have a background, accounting degree from DePaul University. Really my love of my life, uh, in terms of my making a living has been in the stock market since, uh, since, you know, going back 30, 30 years, I kind of fell in love with the concept of figuring out the riddle of the stock market, which is, you know, what makes a company undervalued and, you know, you could buy Amazon, you could buy Google, you could buy these growth companies that, and make, and sit on them and make a ton of money. That's great. That's not what I do. I, I turn over stones and look for the dregs that no one likes and find undervaluation, uh, in, in, in unloved, unloved companies. The ugly, the ugly ducklings, you know, so, um, so, you know, I ran for county auditor, got elected. Um, I wanted to protect the county. I wanted to protect the taxpayers. I had seen, reading in the newspaper over the last, uh, generation or more about the, the way power was wielded in La Porte County, uh, under democratic control primarily because Democrats tended to win elections.
Right.
I didn't like it. What I saw was an attorney whose name was Shaw Friedman, who has an office in downtown La Porte, who was a former Democratic Party Chairman and pretty much for most of the last generation or more, almost the de facto Democratic Party Chairman, even though he doesn't have his name on it. He would recruit candidates for county commissioner, um, who would get elected. He'd constantly run against NIFSCO. You know, it's his clever gimmick was to, you know, ooh, they're, they're, you know, running, you know, blaming and running against NIFSCO and get people elected who would hire him as county attorney and then he'd run the county.
Right.
And I thought that was dirty. I thought, and I've watched it for 30 years. I think it was wrong and I think it was corrupt and it is really. And so I thought, you know, we need a county auditor in there that will be able to watch and, and, and have a chance of protecting the taxpayers from this type of stuff and drawing attention to it, uh, when, when, what, and, and all the aspects of it. And I got in there, I got elected. Joe Haney got elected as a county commissioner and defeated one of, uh, Shaw Friedman's stooge commissioners, Dr. Vijakora. Nice guy, but he doesn't, um, you know, stand up on principle. He's, he's one of, he's historically been one of Shaw Friedman's lackeys, for lack of a better phrase.
Historically, he's voted very passively towards pretty much whatever agenda has been pushed.
Right, right. So, um, so I hoped for, you, you know, I've seen some interesting things and they've been pretty dark things the last three and a half years as the county auditor. I'm the guy that pays the bills, writes the checks for the county.
Right.
Um, uh, we have centralized pay, centralized, uh, centralized where each department head, you know, has authority over a budget. There's highway department or the sheriff, um, or the park department. They have their authority. They're given an amount to spend. They have employees, they, they hide, they, they, that perform the duties of their department and they want to issue payments and we issue them, but then they come through us. It's, we, we issue the checks.
Okay.
So, you know, and we pay the payroll of the county employees. And so we're the financial lifeblood of the county in the auditor's office. But I'm running for commissioner now.
Okay.
I'm running for the seat that, as you mentioned, Rich Rosensky got thrown off the ballot.
Right.
Over, which, you know, was kind of cool. Because Rich has been, I mean, Rich has been a complete horse's ass the last three years and he's embarrassed himself and he's humiliated himself. This is the, the guy that left a snake in, in a, uh, you know, um, rubber snake in an unmarked envelope outside my door.
Right, right.
Uh, the auditor's door.
I just want to interject real quick because-
Station identification?
Right, yeah. No, I think it's important that the viewers, that, that you may or may not know the entire story there. So a, a rubber snake was put into an envelope and slipped under a door.
Well, I left outside the door.
Sorry, left outside the door. Um, and then there were questions. Who did this? There were accusations, you know, hey, you did this. Commissioner Rosensky vehemently denied any involvement, said he didn't do anything until-
Your listeners can Google Stabos, ABC 57.
Yeah.
Rosensky probably because they did a segment that's unavailable. So if you Google Stabos, Rosin- Rosensky.
Yep.
And ABC 57 Snake, you'll get the video.
Yes.
Of the thing.
And because he is on video, not to mention that the-
So I'm holding up the snake at the commission meeting. Commissioner Rosensky, did you leave this snake outside my door? I couldn't have left it because I left for vacation night before. Well, we found on his key fob record and the video outside there. Like he wouldn't know they sees a commissioner, like that he came into the office and left the thing outside the door, trying to scare me or trying to intimidate me. So then he's caught and then he admits it, but he, he doesn't really admit it. He says, oh, I left it on behalf of someone else. No, you didn't. No, you didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. I left it on behalf of so like, like, and by the way, Tim Stabos is a sissy because it bothered him. Like, like he said, that's the Northwest Indiana Times.
Right.
So, you know, Rich Rosensky has been an embarrassment to La Porte County and, you know, maybe we shouldn't be talking about this. We should be talking about, you know, what I want to do as commissioner, but, but part of what I'm talking about and why I'm running for commissioner is this county has been effed up. This county has been really screwed up.
Oh, yeah.
Last generation or more. You're going to get someone who, um, is educated, someone who's got a background in finance. So you want to, you want to segue to economic development and the like? You know, we've had it in La Porte County where there's a toll taker. Um, in, in historically has been Shaw Freeman, who runs the county as an attorney. Cause he gets, he recruits people who then get elected. They hire him as county attorney. They hire him as redevelopment commission attorney. He's the health board attorney. He was the 39 North Conservancy District Attorney or still is, you know? And so, and, and, and he's chairman of the board of the Swanson Center, or he was chairman or a high level position that gets $700,000 a year of county money. So the conflicts of interest are astonishing.
Yes, they are.
They are, um, ugly.
Yes.
And they're wrong and it's compromised, um, the operating authority of La Porte County. The county commissioners, which are a three-member body, a three-member body that's supposed to govern the county, like the mayor of the count, of the county. They should not be beholden to an attorney.
Agreed.
They should not be beholden to attorney. That's wrong.
Yes.
So if you elect me, the great thing about Rich Rosensky getting thrown off the ballot is that he, even though he said he was going to fire Shaw Friedman, he kept Shaw Friedman. He became beholden to Shaw Friedman and he had done, he did things at Shaw Freeman's order. Rich Shaw Freeman, Freeman ordered Rich Rosensky to do things that he did. We saw it. We knew it and it's wrong. So I'm running for commissioner first and foremost, because to look the voter in the eye and say, you are electing the person that's actually going to make the decisions. I will listen to you as the voting public and I will use my conscience and I will use my educated background as that someone with an accounting background, somebody that has a passionate interest in sit in planning and zoning and, and has qualifications regarding overseeing economic development because cost benefit analysis and things like what we call in the finance profession, net present value, which is what is the current value of the stream of future benefits from an economic development project? In other words, if we're going to give tax abatement, are we getting a return on that? Are we giving away the store? Instead of just trusting economic development consultants, outsiders, which, and they're good guys. I mean, they generally know their stuff.
Yeah.
You want to have a commissioner in there that's got a finance background that can directly protect the taxpayers' interest because sometimes maybe the outside consultant, I like our current consultant. I, I think he's good. But sometimes the outside consultant, they want to push a deal over the line because they get paid or whatever. So you want to have a commissioner in there that can do the cost benefit analysis, that can oversee that. You don't need an attorney who's both the county commission attorney, not currently, but was.
Yeah.
Um, and, and also the redevelopment commission attorney, who's got his fingers in the cookie jar and, and is getting benefits for himself or trying to advance his own power, a power broker.
Yeah.
So, you know.
There's an agenda there.
I'm talking about cleaning up the county to have the operating authority to be ultimately possessed, not by me, if I'm elected, but by the people. Because I represent the people and then my good conscience, because I'm not looking to serve my own self-interest. I'm looking to serve the people uniformly because I've been successful in my own private life and I've been sick and I'm sick and tired and at times even despondent, which means like really sad and overwhelmed at what I've seen in the way certain county officials have sold themselves out and do not possess integrity. I'm asking you all listening to support me in the Republican primary and in the general election for county commissioner to clean up this county and have it where you possess through, through me as elected commissioner and the other two commissioners. Joe Haney's a great guy. He's running for reelection.
Yes.
By the way, and possess the operating authority, um, that you actually possess it through someone you elected.
Right. So, right. Absolutely. And I haven't been in politics that long. I really kind of jumped into it in 2020, um, and, and off the deep end, I might add, but, but I learned a great deal in the meantime. And one of the things that I learned is politicians in general, but specifically here in La Porte County, they will look you in the eye and they will promise you the world. They, they will, they will say they're going to do this. They're going to do that. They're going to do this. And then once they're elected, it's like they completely forget who they work for. One of the great things that I appreciate about you is in your time as auditor, you worked for the people, the entire point, every, every meeting that I watched that Mr. Stabos had something to say, it wasn't for his own personal benefit. And, and I think that's really important that people understand. It wasn't, you weren't up there talking for yourself. You were up there talking because you saw something that didn't sit right with your principles.
Right, right.
And that's critical. That's absolutely critical. I, you're one of the few people, and I would say Joe Haney as well, that have been elected and have done what you said you were going to do. And, but I, I do have a question though.
I, 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 I will continue to do what I do, which is stand up for what I believe in because I have to trust that the public, enough people are paying attention to see that he deserves our respect, that we can rely on him and that he will do what he says and says what he does because people are longing in this country. They're longing for leadership and they're longing for truthfulness and they don't mind if they disagree with you on something. If they know that you're honorable, if they know that they can trust you, if they know that your heart is coming from the right place.
Right.
And, um, there's not enough of that. I have seen weak willed people either become puppets of the attorney that I referred to earlier, where they don't stand up, they're coerced by him, they're seduced by him. Or because of their own weak character, their ego needs, their needs for power, their needs to, you know, feel good about themselves, that they get caught up in the trappings of, of the office.
Oh, yeah.
I'm really excited about the possibility of rebuilding the operating authority of the county from the ground up, which is to restore confidence and trust and faith and hope on the part of all of our department heads and to banish or get rid of the way that we've done business in La Porte County and to vest or put trust in each of the 40 or 50 or whatever odd, some odd department heads we have, where they're not living in fear of being told what to do or threatened with being fired because it happens. And it happens frankly, more regularly than you would realize.
Oh, absolutely.
And that they can trust that the people that are in charge are not thugs, which we have had at times or crazies.
Yeah.
Which we have also had, including in, yeah, currently, recent times.
There are some elected officials that fit the bill.
The department heads and employees deserve a, a sane and stable place to work in.
Agreed.
And to be supported, department heads need to be supported in the possession of their authority by the commission. If the commissioners who appoint all the department heads, if they don't like the way someone's doing their job, that person needs to be politely or, you know, or otherwise, if, if it's wrongdoing, replaced. But, but you don't micromanage.
Right.
You don't micromanage department heads because they have, they have specialty. They have expertise in their areas. I'm not an expert in all these areas. I need to provide over, overriding guidance to the county as a whole.
Right, right. I agree. Um, so what do you think is the biggest, you, 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 in my opinion, you've done a phenomenal job as auditor.
Thank you.
A lot of people would run for reelection on that, but instead of running for reelection as auditor, you've decided, you know what? I think I can do more good as commissioner or I think I can solve more problems. What was the big thing for you that made you decide? I'm not going to run for auditor again. I'm going to go for-
It's a great question. It's a great question. Moral urgency.
Okay.
Moral urgency. I have to do this. I can't bear what I'm seeing.
Okay.
I can't bear what I'm seeing. I can't bear what it's costing the people of La Porte County. Um, I, I'm not sure I want this cup or that I want this, this situation, but I have to do this because the people of La Porte County deserve better. And in fact, you know, on my, my rack card here.
By all means.
You know, um, uh, it was printed a couple of weeks ago or whatever.
Okay.
Says the bottom, uh, because you deserve better. So, you know, I can't see that. That's fine. But, uh, and yes, that picture is three or four years old, by the way, of me. Um.
It's not a bad picture.
It's a good picture.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good picture.
So, because you deserve better.
We do. We do. We absolutely do.
So I really felt like I had to run and, you know, I know that especially in the fall, this is going to be an ugly campaign.
Yeah.
Uh, my political enemies, um, those, you know, um, you know, they've sought to get me falsely and illegitimately charged with intimidation or, you know, I'm in illegal disputes with, with attorney Friedman, with Shaw Friedman over, he sued me for defamation three years ago. I spent money out of my own pocket to, to, to fend off this illegitimate fraudulent lawsuit that's intended to intimidate me. Uh, you know, there's, there's, there's stories in the Northwest Indiana Times and in the, in the, in the Herald Argus and Herald Dispatch and Michigan- You know, there's, there's, there's stories in the Northwest Indiana Times and in the, in the, in the Herald Argus and Herald Dispatch and Michigan, Michigan City News Dispatch and South Bend Tribune, going back thirty years, talking about Shaw Freeman's conflicts of interest.
Yes.
And the ugliness of of his self-interest and boy, he's operated. So, you know, we're going to win a trial. The trial is scheduled for June. We're going to go to trial, most likely in any case, and and win that case. But, you know, there's also this this billing dispute where there were certain charges on his bills that I I refused to pay because he couldn't document that he wasn't operating in a political capacity or as a illegal lobbyist or a community organizer or an unauthorized county administrator. So, so, yeah, to answer your earlier question, I felt I had to run for county commissioner because the best chance of restoring the operating authority of La Porte County to the people was for me to run for commissioner. Because it seems like, you know, one of the things that that Mr. Friedman has done successfully in more modern times, it used to be just the guy that recruited Democrats because he was Democratic Party Chair. What you realize is that if you, if the Republicans get a strong presidential candidate and he, his, his stooges get swept out of office, that he's then out of power. So he started inserting his tentacles in the Republicans like Rich Rosinski and others, Rich being a former Democrat, so that he can be in power all the time.
Right.
And so, you know, I need to be the Republican that that runs that will not allow his tentacles to be inserted into me so that the operating authority of La Porte County can be possessed by the actual people elected instead of by, you know, an attorney who's self aggrandizing, you know, among other things.
I think that is really important to understand. So I'm going to, I'm going to kind of back up just a little bit because most people that I've talked to in the course of doing the show, they're very interested, they're very, very interested in local politics, but they don't really follow it. Like, they want to know what's going on at the commissioner meetings, but most people don't have two hours to devote to watch everything. So I've gotten a lot of, a lot of questions and a lot of requests to to cover various events. But there are those maybe that don't quite understand, number one, the function of the auditor's office and number two, how there could be any conflict there. So I'm, I'm going to give a statement and I'd just like you to kind of clarify whether I'm right in this statement. And that is, it is the function of the auditor's office to look at billings and to ensure that they're accurate.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, to audit the bill, to examine the bill.
It's the very function of the office.
We could spend the rest of the the show debating the state law.
Right.
On what the, what the powers are of the department head that wants the bill paid. The, the county commissioners that that hired Shaw Freeman and want his bill paid versus an auditor that looks at a line item on a bill that says that on a certain day that he read an article on CNN dot com about COVID and forwarded on to the health department and charged the county for that. Well, I'm the auditor. I'm looking at saying, you're not a health official.
Right.
You're the county commissioner's attorney. What are you doing for that under the health department and charging for it on the county commissioner bill, you know, like for advising them on legal matters?
Right.
Like, you are not going to, I'm not going to let you be kibitzing over your notions about what the county should be doing from a health based perspective on COVID. That's the health department. And even if, you know, if I don't agree with the health department on certain aspects of COVID, it's, it does, Tim Stamos, it doesn't matter. It's not my business. I'm staying out of it. You know, but he loves inserting his nose everywhere because, you know, as Councilman Earl Cunningham has said, a few years ago, he, he referred to it as Friedman County, not not La Porte County, but Friedman County. We might as well just call it Friedman County. He said that at a public meeting.
I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't incorrect. I mean, that's when I got involved in politics. That was one of the first names that I heard.
Sorry.
No, by all means.
So, I mean, you know, the first thing you want to do, and we talked a lot about this, is to eliminate the forces that undermine the proper possession of operating authority, the proper direction of the port county towards the good purposes that serve the people and serve our future. Like, there's this undermining force that, like, has possessed our county like a demon, frankly, possessing, you know, we're possessed by someone who loves what he's got and won't let go of it and his teeth are sunk, you know, his tentacles are sunk in. You banish that force. You get rid of that force. So that's why we're talking about that a lot.
Right.
But you banish that force by by electing the right people. So if you reelect Joe Haney, who's, who's, who's running for, who's running for county reelection and county commission, if you reelect Joe Haney, and Joe's done a great job. He's got fantastic integrity. He's, I love Joe. He's a great guy. He's principled. He has a ton of integrity and you elect Tim Stables to replace for Rich Rosinski because Rich was thrown off the ballot. Did we talk about that? Yeah, we did. That's right. Then you will know at least that even if you may disagree with us, one will listen.
Right.
And two, we are our own person and no one's going to control us. So then you start talking about what is the vision for La Porte County? I'm a guy that is interested, I said earlier, in planning, in zoning, envisioning, because, you know, county, running a county is different than running a city. You know, we have two major cities. It's half the population in our county, Michigan City and La Porte. They're doing some interesting things. Michigan City is a double track. They're building a tower, you know, where the eleventh street station was or wherever. There's some interesting stuff going on here. There's, you know. And of course, the cities have dominion over their own areas, but the county needs to be a good cooperator with the two cities. The rising tide lifts all boats, as Ronald Reagan said. And 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 the county's job is a major source of funding that comes in. I mean, you know, oftentimes the county is the a primary agent to to talk and negotiate with the state senators, state representatives, the county is the largest entity, right? And to, and to coordinate and and work together, you know, but so, so planning, zoning, you know, La Porte, what are La Porte County's unique strengths? What are the county's unique strengths? We're transportation hub. I think, you know, our way of life is is special, the the historic nature and the lakes and the parks of the two cities that, you know, are part of the oldest in one sense, the old, the old manufacturing towns where this legacy, this what's left over. Yeah, we lost these high paying manufacturers, a lot of them, but there's this built environment, right? There's these, these neighborhoods and now you got a double tracking. And so, you know, we don't want to fear the future, but we want to control it because we don't want outsiders like saying, what's going to happen to us? Our, the public needs reassurance. That's at a county level. That's at the two city levels as well. And so there's a job. It can be harder for people to envision because the county is so vast. The county is the second largest geographically, the second largest land area in the entire state of Indiana of all the counties, from what I understand.
Yes.
Second largest. And so, you know, you, you go from, you know, the Kankakee on the south and the the town of La Crosse to, you know, the Hudson, Hudson Township to to Michigan City, you got, you got, you got a lot of different stuff going on. So it's, it's an interesting exercise in in planning, zoning, you know, we're obviously dealing with the issue of, of, of solar farms right now. And, you know, I haven't taken any public stance on it. One of my, one of my opponents has has made it a major part of his campaign. I, I think there's a lot of different aspects of that that need to be considered rather than just come out either directly for it or against it. One is the private property rights issue. I mean, you know, if if a family wants to keep the the land in their name and they can, they can, they can multiply three or four or five times over the, the, the rent that they get from, because a lot of farmer, a lot of people that own farms rented out to other farmers, they, they may not farm it themselves. Is, is the, is the buffer landscaping, are the setback requirements adequate enough that's in your, in your overseeing zoning law, for example? Some zoning laws require five hundred feet setbacks. So, but I think to just say you're like rigidly no or to have a reactionary response that says no. And, you know, it's a complicated question because some of us as conservatives, I mean, I'm, I'm a Republican, I'm a conservative, don't like the fact that the federal government, I don't know all the numbers behind it, but that they're subsidizing these things and they're actually giving rewards. I've learned a fair amount about this the last several few months. Rewards to like NIPSCO or electric, electric companies for like shutting down coal plants and going to solar. Well, I'm not a fan like of subsidies for the federal government.
Right.
That we're something it doesn't pay for itself.
Right.
But because of a subsidy, which means it's coming out of our taxes, the income taxes we pay, they're giving a subsidy. Like, I don't like, like that. So it's kind of, it's complicated because like you have these non market forces that are encouraging things to happen like the solar. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not easy. It's, it's not easy. There's, there's, there's no, but like to say that we shouldn't have solar here. I think there's been overreacting and kind of painting, painting it, some aspects of it like with as a bogeyman, like I think that the the firm that that spoke before La Porte County at the solar hearing talked about their panels being, you know, their silica, their glass and their aluminum and that they're, this notion of the leaching of chemicals and stuff like that where, oh, my God, it's going to leach chemicals in the ground and they'll never be able to be farmed again. I think some of that's like going too far. I, so I think we need to, I think we need to study it honestly and make it as a decision on each situation. We need to control the destiny of it. Like, do we want to have berms, berms of of soil that block the view of, block the view from the, you know, how expensive is that? So, yeah, we want to control our destiny, but we don't want to have a knee jerk reaction either that says, you know, we're not going to do it, period. That's just my, that's just my, my take on it. And, and so, yeah.
So, but one thing that I think I, I want to make sure I understand is that if the citizens, for example, came to you and said, we as a group and we represent the interested parties, being the farmers and the neighbors, we can show, for example, that, and I I'm throwing stuff out here. I don't have, I, I'm not that up on solar farms. I don't know what they do or like, I know what a solar farm is, but I don't know the long term effects or any of that. I'm tossing out a hypothetical here. If they were to come to you with evidence that there were negatives or with evidence that lots and lots of people of the county were opposed to it, then you would listen to the people.
Well, I mean, yes, I mean, I certainly would like to see that because I I've heard that. You know, I, I'd like to see the horror stories, finding that, you know, the solar farms that have been around for ten or twenty years and are leaching chemicals. I, I'm, I'm open. Yeah, I'm open minded to seeing that. So, yeah, I mean.
Someone has a question.
You know, I, let me just say this. Yeah, hold, hold that, hold that for one second. You know, I'm data driven, okay? My, my, my living in the stock market involves the absorption of information to determine what the value of a company is. And I want to find the cheapest stock out there. I screen, I use numbers to find out of the universe of seven thousand US stocks, which ones are the cheapest. And so I am an information junkie and that's, that's why you want to elect me as commissioner, is that analysis, not analysis paralysis, although I guess I have that sometimes in my private life, but, 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 but analysis.
Yeah.
Fair minded analysis and, you know, making determinations. And it's great when you'll have three commissioners that each have their own minds as opposed to an attorney that's trying to control them. And each, if you have three commissioners each with their own minds, then your deliberative process comes out with something the public can sit at a commission meeting and watch and say, you know what? This is pretty damn good stuff.
Right.
And these are the people we elected and I have confidence because I was talking earlier about the notion that the people long for leadership. They long for, and they had that, say, like in Ronald Reagan at the national level, they long for someone they could best their trusted. And so I'm offering you that at a county level. That's why you should vote for me.
Okay. Uh, there's a question here and Tanya Williams asked, what do you think is the growth potential in the South County towns?
Um, well, you know, South County towns, I mean, you're talking against Hannah and and La Crosse and and you know,
Wantotaw.
Yeah. Wantotaw, I guess Kings, 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 Kingsbury and what have you. Well, I mean, I think one of your determining factors as far as the growth of South County towns really is, is what happens with US thirty.
Okay.
I mean, you know, they're, they're, they've been talking about turning that into a effective limited access interstate highway.
Right.
And, you know, some, some of those, those places are, in case of Wantotaw, right off of thirty. So, I mean, I think, you know, if you increase traffic, increase volume and you're right off that road, I mean, you, you, you then can on an adjunct basis service the traffic from Wantotaw or what have you. Or even, you know, once it's limited access and the traveling is faster, then people will be more comfortable living in these smaller towns and working elsewhere as bedroom communities.
That's absolutely correct.
I'm not sure what more. I, I don't know enough about the individual towns to know what benefits remain as far as rail or otherwise. I mean, obviously we got KIP down, down there that the county is looking to develop specific to or redevelop based upon the the legacy infrastructure that's that's there. So.
And that's the Kingsbury industrial park.
Kingsbury industrial park. So I think that I know La Crosse, for example, is looking to invest in its downtown. I think, I think of a lot of it really is, is done at the local level where the, the, the locals, and I think it's true of La Porte, Michigan City too. I, I've said, because I was interested and I ran for La Porte Mayor before, that as the downtown goes, so goes the city. I mean, the image of your downtown, the beauty of your downtown, is this a place where people want to gather or not?
Right.
And I think La Porte, Michigan City have done, have improved. But, you know, you really need to focus on that and and getting investment in your downtown because then outsiders come in, including potential investors, and they say, you know, this is a quaint place. This is a charming place. This place is going, going places. So that would be true of the small towns as well. I know La Crosse, for example, uh, under Justin Keel, who was the former town board president, now, now a county councilman, has set a vision to invest and create a organized, beautiful downtown sidewalks, curb gutters, because they got to redo their sewer down there. And so, and so, you know, you got to, you got to make it look like it's a place. You know, it's, it's a, it's a place that people want to be to gather and to, what do you call that? What's that phrase? Desirable and happening. I don't want to say hip.
No, you're right.
But, but like, and we've had some of that in, in, in downtown La Porte where I live, I live in La Porte City.
Okay.
And Michigan City as well, first Fridays, second Saturdays, whatever, galleries that have, you know, so.
One thing I'd like to point out for, for those of you watching that are maybe concerned about the limited access highway because in some cases we've seen where it has pretty much killed the economy of a town that used to be connected like right on the drag, you know, the main drag, and then they create a limited.
Are you talking about town specifically or no?
I'm not talking about any place in particular, just in general, like the movie Cars, right? The Disney movie Cars where he goes down and it's this little place and it used to be on the, the, the highway and they built an interstate. One of the things that we noticed here in Michigan City with I ninety four is the south end of town is booming. Like they are constantly building more and more and more and we're seeing a massive uptick in tourists and people stopping for gas and stuff like that. So just because they're building a limited access highway doesn't mean that your town's going to starve and die. There are definitely concerns there and there are changes that will need to be made. But like, for example, they just built a big new massive Loves that's been planned for a long time, but it's finally here. And they got a Godfather's Pizza in there and it's actually really good, but anyway.
Yeah, I mean, really, I guess the question is, it's, it's not easy to answer. I've wondered myself of getting a better sense of it is, you know, if you build these things, these, these roads. Are they going to, are, are there, are more people, are they going to bypass you? Or is it like, you know, when I ninety four went in it, well, of course, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, there's such an ease of access to the, the southern strip of Franklin.
Right.
That then people can come from miles around to Restaurant Row.
Yep.
And or or Lowe's and Menards and 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 shop for the best price. Lowe's, Menards, is there a third hardware? No, you know, but and shopping district kind of there.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, like, it's a destination which ultimately is good for the county, good for that area as a whole.
Yeah, not only the city, but the county as well.
So it's, 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 it's a complicated question. I mean, you know, as far as, there's, there's a natural fear that, you know, how do we know we're not hurting ourselves, right?
Right.
If we build a bypass or if we, you know, facilitate trucks to not be in our downtown. And there's obviously been a lot of debate over, over the bypass for La Porte City and I've had people advise me politically, it's, it's a loser. Don't talk about it and, you know, and I, that's not really, you know, and, you know, I'm not saying we're, we're going to talk about it here because we only got like ten minute, five minutes and there's probably other things to talk about. You know, I'm running for county office, so that's a narrow interest, a somewhat narrow interest.
You know, more specifically, it pertains to La Porte City.
Yeah, I mean, getting trucks out of the downtown is an interest that that they have.
Right.
And that's, you know, one of the important questions really is, as a county commissioner, you know, you've got to in good faith weigh the interests of the county as a whole.
Bingo.
You know, just, you know, granted, there's three commissioners that are each, need to live in three separate districts, but they're elected countywide.
Yes.
So, that's a interesting, yeah.
It is.
So.
It is. It's an interesting dynamic and it's something that I hope that regardless of the, regardless of what happens in this election, I would actually like to see, because it's been a while since we've actually had three independent, intelligent personalities in charge of this county without two or more of them being, I won't, I won't say controlled, but.
Say puppets, say puppets.
At least.
I'll, I'll tell you the last time.
Enslaved to an agenda, whether it's, whether it's a particular agenda or an individual's agenda. There, there haven't been enough discussions or at minimum independent personalities. And that's.
I'll say the last time I remember. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
No, you're, you're.
No, no, you go.
Yeah. That's one thing I'll say about Joe Haney, regardless of, you know, he, we'll have him on and we'll, we'll discuss. we'll have him on and we'll, we'll discuss his personal, um, achievements and, and hurdles. But one of the things that I appreciate about Joe Haney is that he is not afraid of being an individual. He's, he's not afraid of going against the pack. And it's again, one thing that I greatly appreciate, appreciate about you is rather than thinking about how is this going to look in the press or how am I going to craft this press release? You do what's right. Whether, whether people agree or disagree with you, in your mind, you're doing what's right for the people of the county.
And that may be shocking. The public, the public wants to elect a person.
Yes.
The public wants to elect an individual. They want to elect someone who actually has, um, integrity.
Yes.
And beliefs, but listens as well.
Yes.
So, um, yeah. So what we were talking about earlier, there was something more to that, um, prior. Uh, well, yeah. Um, you know, I want to reassure people that I understand that there's a higher call. Yeah. I'm from the city of LaPorte. Yeah. I ran for mayor and yeah, I was LaPorte city councilman. Uh, who cares? Um, I understand that, you know, you're ready for county commissioner and I've served as the auditor for three and a half years. So my identification, my identity now has become county. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a county official, right? So this natural progression that, that this is a balancing act between, okay. And I've seen this in terms of the appropriations, the county councils decides where money gets spent. We got $20 million for the federal government COVID money where they can spend different, different things. And oh, does Hudson Lake get it for a sewer line that runs out there or whatever? They want to do development of sewers in Hudson Lake or does, or does, you know, uh, lacrosse and Hannah get it for sidewalks like this federal money? When that's going to go away, but and I understand and I want to reassure people that this was a weighty decision about fairness, about fairness, who gets what, how county money gets spent. And I don't take it lightly. And I, I know that you all need to have confidence that decisions are already made on a fair basis as possible with input from all parties and that, you know, uh, I, I do my best based upon my conscience, based upon honesty, based upon taking input, but then ultimately, of course, we're designed that three people vote publicly, transparently to make a decision and not everyone's going to always agree, but at least you can respect me and my basis for making decisions. That's what I, that's what I plan on if, if elected, when elected. So.
Well, we got a few minutes left. I want to
Cutting it off, sure. Right. Okay. We start, we started late.
Yeah, we started a little bit late. Um, we got, we got like eight minutes left for, uh, for if it, if we're going to cut it right at.
Give me a hard time.
I know, I know. That's, that's welcome. Actually, um, a lot, a lot of times when I have someone on there, they're, they're very stiff. They're very worried. Um, I want to show, and I think it's really important to show the person that you're voting for. Yeah. You can read press releases. You can follow them on social media. You know, you, you can do these things. But there's just something the, the, there's just something more. When you see someone on camera, sitting there, talking to you.
Yeah. Let me, let me say this. It's kind of gets back to somebody I said earlier. I have seen when people trust one another, um, department heads in, in the county or in an organization. Um, and you know, this has been something new for me. I'm 56 years old, but I've been an entrepreneur my whole life, which means I work for myself, right? In the stock market, I had certain small business activities. Uh, this was something new for me and, and kind of challenging, a little scary at first, uh, to have a staff of 14 people that worked for me. They're all women, uh, which, which is fine. I only, I only bring that up just because there's a certain dynamic when your staff is all woman and you're
Oh, yeah.
And you're a man or whatever. It's, it's because there's, you know, a unique social dynamic.
You gotta be really, really nice.
And, and, um, you know, I've enjoyed that role, supporting my staff uh, in, in, in their professionalism and in multiple ways. I mean, you know, and, um, building a team, supporting a team, believing in people, um, having them move laterally in my office from one position to higher up promotions and, and we're a very strong office and I'm very proud of that. Uh, it's a great culture and I like to bring that culture to the county as a whole. And it's really a culture of trust.
It is.
Where, um, people feel safe. I want the department heads and all the employees to know that, um, to feel safe.
Right.
And Joe Haney tried to bring in when he first got in an office, a whistleblower protection because we needed whistleblower protection. And it was sabotaged.
Yeah.
Um, by, you know, Sheila Matias and Rich Brzezinski and Shaw Friedman, because they were afraid, you know, Shaw Freeman was afraid that, ooh, who's going to be, the whistle going to be blown out. It's going to be blown on me, Shaw Friedman. So we have to sabotage this, you know, that's basically what happened at the time. And so we got watered down whistleblower protection that wasn't really whistleblower protection at all. You know, so, but you want people, the point about that is the bring up Shaw Freeman against the point is that you want and people to feel safe because then they can flourish.
Right.
I want department heads and, and their direct reports and ultimately the down, the, the guy at the, on the line or in the foxhole of the county employees to all, to feel safe. That's, and so, you know, because then you flourish, you function, you produce for the people of LaPorte county. And, uh, there's a lot of good things about LaPorte county. There's, there's strong departments. There's, there's, there's good leadership. There's independently elected officials that can run their departments like me as the auditor frankly, where they're not interfered with by the dysfunctionality, uh, because the, my staff knows that they're accountable to me and no one's going to hurt them. No one's going to terrorize them, but other departments where the department heads are appointed by the commissioners, you have dysfunctionality at the commission level. Then you have, I mean, you have, you have certain people now, former commissioners that were fired for political reasons, suing the county and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a disaster really. It's, uh, and that's a reflection at of dysfunctional decision-making at the commission level.
Right.
That puts the county at risk. And now I got a legal bill across my desk for $12,000 to pay because certain commissioners were irresponsible in the way they fired someone or they fired them for political reasons, in my opinion. And I think, wow, I need to run for commissioner because the public deserves better. And that's why on my card here, it says, because you deserve better. That's not because I think I'm a great guy or because I, I've got an ego. That's because you know what? I got to run for this office because um, I can't bear what I've seen and I can do better.
Right.
And so please elect me and I won't let you down and you can have confidence in me. And really like Joe Haney, because Joe is an honest, great guy with a lot of integrity and he's very smart too.
Yes. I, I'll tell you, at least for me, my ideal, my ideal commissioner lineup, right? Would be you and Joe Haney. And then
Someone, someone, someone like.
Get figured out.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were going to give me, tell me your dream commissioner. Who, who would that be? You know?
So I, it's a little early.
Is, oh, I see. Yeah. Yeah.
It's a little
That becomes, that becomes a recruitment thing, right?
Right, right. But I, I will say this.
I know someone very close to you that ran for that.
Right, right. I, I will say this. You and Joe don't agree on everything. It's not like you guys are a carbon copy of each other. But you can,
That's true.
You guys can, can get together and have a conversation and have a discussion and have disagreements and keep it civil without snarky comments or ridiculous behavior. I would love to see a commission personally with you and, and Joe Haney, because I know both of you. Now that said, it's a, it's, it's a primary. Who knows what could happen? Um, I'm not supporting anyone publicly at this point because it's a primary and I hopefully will have other people on the show. Um, just so you know, your opponent, um, one of your opponents, Steve Hollifield, um,
Please do not, please do not say his name on my show. Oh, just kidding. No, it's a joke.
You're, no, you're right. You're right.
No, that's a joke. I, Steve, I love Steve. I,
He's a nice guy. He did.
Steve and I have been getting along fine, even though we're running against each other.
Right, right. You're, you're both
You know what? Because Steve is, Steve is, is his own principle and his own integrity. And I respect that. I think I'm the better candidate, obviously. Um, and more background, more, more, you know, more qualified. Um,
I will say this because I think it's important.
Um, please do not talk about Steve. Oh, just kidding.
No, it's, it's fine. He had, he had, um, he had made an appointment. He had made an appointment for an interview to come onto the show. Um, he canceled the day before. Now bear in mind, he had set up the time and the date for this. Um, he canceled the day before. We had reached out to him to have him reschedule and we haven't heard back from him.
And I'm sure he'll be back.
So hopefully we'll have him on. If not, um, I will say this. I am looking forward to spirited debate on and between the commissioners rather than the culture that exists.
We, we have vowed to be respectful. Steve and I, I called him, he called me, you know, whatever it was. And, and it's been
You guys have known each other for a long time, haven't you?
Yeah. I mean, Steve was, um, was a, uh, active in the Democratic party and ran for county council years ago, but, uh, I met Steve, uh, 15 or so years ago and because he was going on sound off and saying what a bad force Shaw Freeman was for LaPorte county. I said, Steve, I, there's no Democrats doing this.
Yeah.
Um, uh, like you are, and I, I respect you and thank you for doing this, you know, so, um, yeah.
So what, what do you think is the biggest? The, other than what we've already discussed, what do you think is the biggest issue facing LaPorte county right now? Obviously we talked about some, some behind the scenes forces, some current elected officials who are
Yeah. I mean, leaving that aside, leaving that, leaving the cleaning up of corruption and leaving up the cleaning up of the corrupted operating, uh, the way the county operates, uh, because there's, there's a very good chance that that, that part gets fixed. And you got to say, where do you want to take us?
Right.
Well, I mean, you know, you, you, the, again, the unique strengths of the county, what, you know, I, I, you, you, everyone always talks about economic development. So, you know, that's kind of your, your number one answer because, um, you know, even if there's more of a problem with crime, perhaps in Michigan city, for example, that's, that's the job of, of, of the city and the mayor and the police chief to take care of. So, you know, and, and hopefully they, they are and they will. Um, um, so, you know, I think really long-term visioning and, and planning and, and economic development and what we want for ourselves as a county, like we made a decision a few decades ago, uh, kind of right when I was getting here, I guess, to, you know, to get rid of the dump. And, and give up the tipping fees that we got from having a dump right at our expressway entrance to a city. And you know what? It's probably a good decision. Because was it worth it to sell our souls and sell our bodies and sell our, sell ourselves for, for that money? Probably not.
No.
Probably not, you know? So, you know, and I don't know how all that decision, decision, those decisions are made and, and, and who with leading forces goes a little bit before the time, time when I came here. But, uh, so, you know,
Kind of back in the day.
What, what, um, so, um, but I, I'm a firm believer that by, um, hanging on a shingle and putting our best foot forward for the unique quality of life that we have. It's not about, oh, let's throw all these tax abatements at people to get them because all these other places are trying to do the same thing.
Okay.
So how does the county work with the cities to make this place that we call LaPorte county? And, and the cities may be more important than the counties because if manufacturers are going to, our businesses are going to locate, they're most likely going to locate in one of the two cities.
Yeah.
Uh, it can be the county, but it's going to be typically off the interstate.
Usually.
Where we put infrastructure in like where Loves is.
Right.
So, but you know, it more commonly will be the two cities, but the county has its own developable area.
Yeah.
Areas. Um, how do we put our best foot forward? What are our unique, our unique strengths where we can market ourselves in a way that it's not about throwing tax abatement at them and buying them to come here. But where they want to come here because they think it's stable. They think it's going in the right direction. They think there's great planning, zoning, um, visioning and that, um, their people, they want to move their people to live here.
Yes.
So I mean, that's a tremendous competitive strength that we can leverage even more. Now the two cities are going to have their own responsibility to do that. Again, the double tracking those historic neighborhoods in Michigan city, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah.
Um, now, and, and we can't operate based on fear.
Right.
You know, there's, there's some there to be fearful. Well, I don't, you know, do we want us to gentrify? Do we want people from Chicago or whatever to be coming here and restoring old houses? Well, I think generally the answer is yes, but um, because then you increase the value of the properties. If they're investing in them, your tax base expands so that those of us maybe who live in more modest areas that aren't like having their values go up tremendously, our taxes will go down. The taxes will go down on a more modest, a modest house in a more modest area because the assessed value of that house won't go up as much as, you know, if they come and do the type of stuff they do.
Right.
With gentrification in Chicago. So, but my point about all this is we need to control the destiny. I'm, I'm a Laportian. I'm a LaPorte county person. I, I, you know, and, and so it's, it's us controlling our destiny together through our county commissioners, through our elected mayors. And that we don't have to be afraid about growth if we can reassure the people that and, and talk to our people and get input from our people. Okay. What do they want with solar farms? Yeah. We don't, we don't ignore it.
Right.
But there are people that have farms.
Yeah.
That want to, um, that want to, uh, put the panels there.
Right.
And they can dump electricity right into the grid because the power lines are right above them.
Right.
And it'll supply the equivalent of 60,000 houses, which are the entirety of LaPorte county, you know? Um, again, I'm not a fan of government federal subsidies. So there's, there's a number of different considerations here. But, um,
But it's obvious that
And what makes LaPorte county unique and special is
You're willing to look at all the aspects of it and carefully consider what the best thing for LaPorte county is. Not the best thing for a certain small group, but the best thing for LaPorte county as a whole.
Right, right. What, what do we want? I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily have answers to all of these questions. We've been 110 to 115,000 people kind of for the last 50 years, essentially, and modest, modestly growing the last, you know, last maybe 20 or so, I think. But you know, what, what do, what do we want? What do the people want? Uh, uh, you know, if you grow and if you grow at least some, some two, three, four, five percent a year, you know, they've talked about wanting, and you have it in Michigan city. We don't have it as much in LaPorte city.
Right, right.
And they don't have it in the rural parts of the county. But you have a better chance of getting national chains. You want that chain restaurant, you know, to come here, um, to come if you're, if you're growing because then they'll put the one restaurant in, they'll say, well, you know, if this place is going 3% a year, our sales will grow with them. But if you're stagnant, you're flat, they don't want to make that investment because like, we don't know if this is going to go down or if it's going to stay flat.
Right.
But it's not going up. So we're not going to make it. So if you're growing, eat your population, even one or two or three percent. And they see like you've grown one or two. So if you want to grow super fast, like Carmel, Indiana, probably not, you know, but, uh, so I, I don't have all the answers, but I, I do know the right questions. And I think you do want someone in charge as one of three commissioners who, who has a passionate interest in planning and zoning and visioning and, and that, that type of thing for the county as a whole.
Absolutely. Okay. Last, last thing here, and that is what key thing or individual feature or bit of trivia, would you want people that are watching this to know about you?
Boy, we talked about it, a number of things already.
Yeah, we did, which if you're tuning in late, make sure you go back to the beginning, but, but skip like the first minute or so where I messed up the mic.
Um, I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Um, what, what did you say? What were the three questions? Bit of trivia?
No, like if, if there was one thing that you wanted the people watching to know about.
I suppose, uh, I suppose that I tried out three or four years in a row, but not this year for who's your star?
Oh, okay. What's who's your star?
Who's your star? What?
Yeah. I don't know. I'm not familiar with it.
Can I shame you?
You can shame me a little. Yeah, yeah. No, I have no idea.
Who's your star is the singing competition in the city of LaPorte.
Oh.
That's a civic auditorium.
Oh, wow. All right.
That, um, is where the, you know, they compete. There's tryouts usually, you know, kids division, adult division and for amateur singers.
Yeah.
And, um, I've tried out the last, uh, four or five years, didn't make the finals.
Okay.
But didn't make it this year. Didn't even try out. The trials were like last weekend. I've been too busy with campaigning and stuff.
Yeah.
But I think last year I tried out with, um, one of my favorite songs is, this is a bit of trivia.
There you go.
Is, um, It Never Rains in Southern California by, uh, Al, Alan Hammond, Hammond, Hammond's from the early seventies, you know?
See?
I don't know what it is, but I guess you want to know something about me.
Yeah.
Is, um, two of my favorite songs from when I was a kid in the seventies, I was born in 1968, where, uh, it never rains in Southern California, which is about, you know, uh, a guy going to Hollywood, a young kid going to Hollywood and dreaming, you know?
Right.
Um, I, I could maybe sing part of it, but, uh, uh, and then the other one is Rhinestone Cowboy by Glenn Campbell, which is 1974, which is these dreams of, of stardom and that.
Yeah.
And I just, I don't know, I was a kid, but those songs inspired me because, you know, it never rains in Southern California. Got on board a westbound seven forty-seven. Didn't think before deciding what to do. Yeah. It's just
Look at that.
Um, so
You have a, you have a very good voice.
So, um, you know, that's something I guess to know about me. And then I guess the other thing that we wrap it up here is, uh, again, the same era of my childhood, uh, uh, is two of my favorite TV like shows at the time, I, you know? And, and one was 1974. It only lasted one season, The Night Stalker.
Oh, okay.
Darren McGavin was, uh, a TV reporter investigating monsters and and, and vampires and all kinds of these fake, these, you know?
Right, right.
And, uh, his boss didn't believe that he was seeing these things and they had fights and stuff. And
Okay.
And, uh, that was, that was, you know, the guy seeking the truth, right? He was a reporter that was finding the monsters. It was dangerous. The monsters could kill him.
Yeah.
But he, he was going for the truth and he wanted to expose, look, I'm really seeing these monsters. You have to believe me.
Right.
And, you know, it was just, it was interesting.
That is interesting.
And, um, and he wore his pork pie hat. He had a hat and his seersucker outfit. It was just, he was, you know, and, and the other was actually my, my hero of my youth was Quincy, Dr. Quincy.
Okay.
Jack Klugman as the medical examiner.
Yeah.
Uh, in that nineteen seventies TV series where he was righteous and he was uncovering corruption and that. So, if you, you know, if you want to know something about Tim Stabos, uh, at my, my inspirations were, uh, were, uh, Quincy M E.
Yeah.
Uh, fictional, you know, heroic figure.
Okay.
So television had redeeming features in those days. You know, they had, they had, they set examples for, for children, like, and the public.
Quality masculine heroes.
Quality masculine heroes, uh, you know, what? The last one was Michael Gross on Family Ties, maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, and then you got married with children, which really kind of disgusted me. That was like the beginning of the downfall. But anyways, we got, we got to wrap up the show.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We're out of time, ladies and gentlemen. Um, thank you very much for, for joining us as always. And, uh, I hope that this gives you an opportunity to get a little bit of insight to who, who the person behind the campaign is. I think that's really important. That's what I try to do on this show.
Thanks for doing the show, Deon. You do a great job. And you did a great job with me, just bringing out the person. And, uh, so I'm glad, glad you do. It's great service to the, to the public.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop you off here and there we go, ladies and gentlemen, Tim Stabos, um, running for LaPorte County Commissioner in the Republican primary. There is just enough time left. If you are not registered to vote, I highly recommend you get on it, because you're running out of time. Um, I forget what the exact cutoff date is. Um, look it up. It's, it's not hard to find. Um, I had it, but I, I'm not running, so I'm not nearly as worried about, uh, important. I'm just kidding. No, it, it is important. And I, again, whatever your party persuasion, Democrat, Republican, please register to vote and vote in the primary. In many, many cases, LaPorte County is a, is a good example of this. Indiana as a whole is a better example. In many cases, the, uh, the election is decided in the primary. So fingers crossed that, that's the case here. Um, because I personally am tired of the way LaPorte County has been run for quite a while. I personally want to see some major changes. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, I think we've gone on long enough. Thank you for spending your time with me this evening and I hope you enjoyed this kind of look behind the curtain. God bless you. God bless Indiana and God bless the United States of America.
If you'd like to support the show, please visit our Patreon at patreon.com/diansdailydose. This has been Deon's Daily Dose hosted by Deon Berger. Executive producers Sean Holgrum and Michael Beebe. Copyright 2024. Deon's Daily Dose, all rights reserved.